We play off the eight five. The line over time.
Which measured southeasterly toward George Hill Road and site distance of seven hundred and twenty seven feet was measured northwest for the. And um, these are first sheets and one point one five on the site distances and the resulting times. So. Yeah. We exceed the uh site distance requirements by the back. Um item nine, um existing proposed locations of monuments should be later. And um. Plan has been updated to show monuments along the road. Show property bound monuments each lock corner on the street sheet provided and. Probably bound monuments can added at each lock corner along those right away. To sheet C two point one through sheet C two point four. Uh item ten. Uh what will happen with existing utility easements across the property? Will ways over easements be ma- maintained? On the app can confirm that the easements will be maintained and reconfigured in or vacated on a as needed basis. As the existing utilities are realigned to always align. At eleven, are there wells currently serving the adjacent buildings? On or near this subdivision parcel? Further protected gradient as well and how will they be protected during an active destruction? And responses, the applicant confirmed there currently no well serving the buildings adjacent to the site. So. Two oh one Hilltop Road. Six seven nine George Hill Road served by water pump. From the pump house here, which is in itself served by a water service from Bull Hill Road. Previously covered. These raw properties. Are on on well, but they're fairly remote from the.
But just to be clear, they are adjacent.
They are adjacent. They are, they're adjacent to the property itself. They are not adjacent to any areas of the surface. Um at twelve, I propose installation of a public water line impacting existing water easements through the property. And response, the applicant is currently in discussion with two oh one Hilltop Road and six seven nine George Hill Road. Uh proposed water main being installed will maintain the easements until an agreement is reached with the body of law. Item fifteen, uh is any shared open space proposed in subdivision? Our response, uh no shared open space is proposed as part of this. Item sixteen, are any easements proposed for stormwater management areas? On easements have been added to plans that all we propose stormwater management areas. So the entire. Area of storm form motivation is included in. Easements as well as stormwater in this yard. Um environmental alternatives analysis required for proposed subdivision with more than eight lots. And response, environmental analysis was submitted. We had, we had submitted initially a, the original of twenty twenty. On environmental analysis and that was subsequently followed up by a September twenty twenty four environmental analysis prepared by N C. And where do you stand with the con, speaking of environmental analysis? Con, we have uh opened with them and they have a peer reviewed site lock with our consultant. Um item twenty waivers, uh the applicant is requesting two waivers, uh one proposal station proposed road for a site visit. And the other related to the dead end street layout. Uh these waivers may not be necessary. First waiver refers to preliminary claim requirement. And so the plan. On regarding the second request, uh proposed subdivision is a lane which is permitted to be dead end street and then non public sector. It invited their Santa Rosa Lawrence and Rizikia glass. They are here to provide this room. Knowledge, uh waivers to care area original preliminary process. Requested waivers can be discussed with the planning board and in money. Item twenty one, a review line of sight vertical curve on sheet C four point one zero station. Forty eight plus fifty to forty nine plus fifty. Is a vertical curve necessary here? It looks like you're adding fill to make the curve. And in response, a vertical curve has been revised from one hundred foot press curve to two hundred foot press curve. Resulting in a K value sixty eight point nine. Uh to succeed the Astro, the Astro requirement of thirty five or a thirty mile an hour mile per hour. A vertical curve itself is necessary to shed water according to the stormwater design and to meet grading requirements for the body. Check the three oh five stormwater management rules and regulations comments. Item three, provide fencing around the detention on areas with designated access points for maintenance. Changing fence. Fencing with gates provided around the proposed stormwater management areas. These referred to sheet C four point three and four point four for locations and sheet C six point two for details. Item four, provide consistent river outside in details. Uh drainage cleared and output detail over retention based in D P C. In response, um drainage cleared and output and preform scourable details have been provided on sheet C six point two. Additional design information provided in sheet C four point three and four point four. And right documentation with the location list. So the um drainage cleared outlets. Is the pipe discharged into the basins? And then the preform, preform scour holes are the. Overall out health of discharges in the basin prior to um flowing to the western access. Uh detention based planning, a variety of plans provided on the sheet with no indication of proposed planning locations. As provided for its maintenance and the reserve and returning before the basin walls. Only black grass or other shallow rooted plantings are typical. Um in response, the proposed landings are going to be planted in the bottom of the stormwater base management areas only. So they want it's function as power protection. Um the burn of the stormwater management areas, I think, oh, oh. And the uh the construction detail itself is updated by dead end.
Okay. Do you have anything beyond that?
So that, that covered um the review letter received from Harry Ward. Uh we had also provided documentation to Public Works Water Division. Um which um Brian saw, which provided um documentation of. Fire flow testing. Well, as um. So that provided documentation that we need section through one dash twelve point B one of the main character subdivision warrants. Or an available fire flow of seven thirty fifty gallons demanded at twenty PSI. You got documented and available fire flow of twelve hundred and seventy C P L committed at twenty PSI at.
So that's coming out of the fragment of Melanson system.
That is coming out of the, the water main is in all of them.
That is in private.
That's fully right.
Public way and water system. And there are no plans for the town.
Let's see, it's a way, it's a way of right, to the level of way, right?
That may be, but the town has no plans to accept the water system itself.
The connection, I'm sorry, I'm just.
Yeah.
Yeah, just a little tech, we didn't technically, you're talking about where the connection is at the hydrant. Um it is, is that which, that which side? I'm going to go on for a minute.
Yes, that's, that's. I'm okay, I'm sorry, there's, I'm, I'm listening to you and I'm listening to Kendra as well. So there is a hydrant at George Hill Road and Hilltop. But I assume it's not by speaking about, or is?
Is, is.
So you're talking about getting your water from that hydrant.
Right.
George Hill.
From, from, from the water main in all from that city.
Okay, that's, that's a very different thing.
There's two hydrants up there. There's a hydrant down by the mountain, three sheet. On George Hill and Hilltop. Then there's the hydrant that I think were developed the, the.
Yeah.
At Hawthorne and Phil's door, Hawthorne and Hilltop. Yes, that hydrant now that the road has been accepted is in a public.
The hydrant is a public way, that is correct. The system, however, is private.
And there are two things. So when you say the system. The water from the pumping station on George Hill Road to the end of Hawthorne Lane, where it hits Hill, hits Hilltop is private.
Well, it's on by the top of the connection.
It's fine, but you're connecting to a private system. Well, you're not connecting to a public system there.
Well, we did, I'll guess it. I guess you know, the, the presentation, I mean. If I may, um that in the same letter to Public Works, we also document. Um that we meet second through one dash twelve point four B ones, you know, that's required and available street pressure. At minimum forty PSI at the road in, in subdivision, I've already provided documentation at seventy six. From from that. Does that take into account the elevation? It's rated in one hundred and fifty two, yes. That says, um, that takes in income. And your contention is that. If that water from that. If we're talking about. Um. From George Hill, the public water main from. Public Works side from George Hill Road, I get to the site. That you would not need. Any type of booster or any type of pumping system to get to Hawthorne. With, with what we have designed, well, with what we have designed from um Hawthorne Lane. Where engineers have still up to our subdivision, that's what this document is. From Hawthorne. And that's what our, what our witness had, that's the most.
So to follow up on that, are you contemplating a pumping station? In this subdivision?
No, we're, we're saying there's no need for sub, subject, just what are your particular questions? We're saying if there's sufficient pressure. Uh that we document at the intersection of Bill Bob Lane and Hawthorne.
Right. It's, it's town link up, the county maintaining that hydrant. That is technically, I didn't take water from, or the water's private.
I, I don't.
So it's complicated. Right now, um there is a pumping station in George Hill Road that. Supplies that subdivision. There are no water meters for any houses in that subdivision. All the water is metered at pumping station, which Melanson pays for apparently out of an Esprit. There are no plans by D P W to take that over. I don't know what the legal requirements are to maintain that. So you're saying that they connect on that, you're going to be going on his meter. No, they're connected to a subdivision control, I believe requires you to connect to town water for a well. For us, it's either of those. Because it's a private system.
I, I think Mike said it right, that if, if you're in, just make sure. You just said the pump station that needs Hawthorne Hill, right?
It's Hawthorne Lane.
Is on single meter. Yeah, so all that water that comes through there. Uh also the water that goes to that hydrant. Is on that single meter.
I believe so. We can ask. Right.
Yeah, that, I mean, that, that is my understanding based on previous discussions with staff. So if that's the case, I mean. It's not the town's decision, it would be here and with. That correct or incorrect?
It would, right, I mean, the, in order to bring water to this site, you would have to have some type of an agreement, even if. By with the brown or with the private, with the, with the, with the private. But so that's not, that's not town water. Our subdivision rule right says, whenever possible. You tie into town water. The town water is available at George Hill Road, the hydrant at George Hill Road. That's what we're looking for.
Okay.
And.
Or a person.
The chair of commission, I'd like to have Kate explain what she explained to me earlier regarding the situation. But this is still.
Do you um?
She's sitting in the back of this room.
Kate, do you wish to do that at this time? It's totally your call.
Yeah, sure. So it's just a brief overview.
Can I, can I get you to step up the same pace so people can hear? And here you. Yeah, they're waiting, it's all in very high definition now, most great.
Right. So, uh so I'm, I'm Kate, that's a good straighter. Um the Warren Art did have a town meeting, uh I think everybody knows now, so. The hydrant at the bottom is uh is a town road and has access to the town's town hydrant. Um. Interestingly about hydrants, they're on tolls, they're on hydrants, they're not like hydrants because obviously we have to connect to them if ever they're needed for purpose. But um the case, being people that are referring to it's private water, it's not private water, that's actually public water. It's a public water supply that the D E P then regulates through the water division. Um as part of the Department of Public Works, so um there is an avenue where it could be connected at the hydrant. Um depending on what needs to happen relative to the pipes that run from underneath the open space. I would think a back track would be a routine easement. Both for access and maintenance over the open space parcel which the town currently does not hold. Um and roadway and connection from uh whoever the entity is, I would think would have to be dual purpose through the scoreboard and the D P W commissioners. Um but all that said, um there will be a time when the town has to. Figure out how it is that the town is going to gain access to the public water supply system at a resource station. Um the other thing is that it, it might be difficult to be able to get an easement over the open space or up for the easement or line under the open space parcel because. That's currently a tax title, so it, it doesn't really have a clear title, so that has been, that's a hurdle that has to be um. Yes, jumped over by someone that is not in this. Those that money system. Like in front.
Well, so I, actually, that's a little bit different than some of our previous discussions, so I want to make sure I completely understand what you just said. So. The piping right now that is underneath the, so the pump, the pumping station is private.
Correct.
That is in agreement.
So I think.
So all the utility pipes are private meter.
Correct.
Okay. So, but the.
But the bottom of proof is the town.
But it is all metered at the pumping station.
It is, it is metered.
Okay. So. If it's metered at the pumping station. What are the town's plans for the private pipes and the eleven houses of Hawthorne Lane that are now not individual paying for water?
I think, I think that's a D P W, um at least initially, um because I don't, I don't want to. Speak for them, although I.
And Scott, 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 it's Scott, Scott.
Yeah, recognize Scott.
Thank you, Kevin.
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I, um, the, uh, the water is metered at the pump station, but there is also meters at each individual home. So the, the, the individual homes are being built separately at the moment.
So Scott, if I have a question.
Excuse me?
And I love that Scott to clarify your answers. So Scott, just make it really black and white. Yes, there may be a meter in compensation, however, the eleven homeowners on Hawthorne Lane. Receive town water bills and pay them out of their own means. It doesn't come out of some Melanson.
I think they are paying them out of their own means. I know there, there is a meter at each house. Whether they're actually in the system separately. At the moment, I am not a hundred percent sure on that one.
All right, thank you. I appreciate that. Um I just walked in that, that's pretty bad, that's um. You know, you've got that stuff. The, the pump, the pump station certainly is, but not the eleven individual home.
Right, so I think. Yeah, we are, I have a part of the leaves because my concern is. No, but, but that'd be, be, I don't know what the account is. Because.
Because I got an email, I mean, right. Was my memory off on this?
But it's not.
Well, what I, what I conveyed to you was when I am sure, Kate, was the how the water was being paid for.
For a shirt. But that's not, that's different than a. Don't want to go back and find and revisit the other question or things we have at the.
All.
It's a law, it's a shirt that's in, that's in a bag. And but I think I will, I do. If it isn't the, the something paid by the Sampson to do what they're doing.
Mm-hmm.
On a monthly basis, for them, a quarterly basis, but the town receives the reports for them. So we're okay. So like the town, the owner, they give the owners.
So is that hydrant? Able to be connected to or not?
I mean. Yeah, it, it, yeah, you'd be able to connect to it. I, I believe that there are a number of things that. Happened from a number of parties. And it's hard to be able to commit a third party. That we have not been successful in committing what we look. That would be my only. Concern is obviously. Whomever builds wherever needs the water, so the, the, the pipes and the area underneath building space of the pump station. And the, the town doesn't have that to give.
So the, the question, and apparently we're going to need to ask council on this, is does connecting at that hydrant. Count as connecting to town water, given that it's going through private pipes? And through a pump station that the town does not control, that it's critical to its function?
I would say, yes, it's town water. No, it is not town service. I mean, I mean, it's a pump station, the service signs, so let's, let's think, if you live in Clinton. Clinton technically does not pay for water. They pay for service that goes back for years. We won't get into that history. But. Clinton does not pay for water use. They pay for just service use. So the fear is if the pipe breaks, if that pump house breaks down, if the pipes freeze embossed. Between the pump house and this development. Who pays for it? Melanson including, we, we don't have any utilities, right? Yeah, they drained it even over, right? So that's the first.
Yep.
Including under the roof. Yep. That is not, the town has not fallen the repairs nor the ownerships.
So Kate, first question, so one of the houses, they, they get water in that system today, have a pipe rate going to that. But what is, what is the town, who takes it?
So the town would have to notify the owner of the utilities, which is Melanson. If it's a health and safety issue. And the, and the owner is not being responsible, then the town would take an emergency action. But there would be bills associated with that that are not this.
Has that happened?
No, they don't.
So there's pipes under.
So no changes. Yeah, that's.
So they, they have a question later. I think it's given, it's one hundred and it's chairman's streeters have to be saying quite, well, we're going to use. But they were private pipe systems. They usually just think should be um agreed at least for whoever owns the private system. What is the danger for you to pick without any amount of erosion?
Yeah, and the town submitted a draft, uh sort of agreement would look like.
Yeah. So this is presupposing it, but it's a public water supply, so I think the chairman's street reported our, that would be the requirement of water availability. My point is, I just wonder whether then a condition can be stated relative to maintenance.
I actually did not.
I think you said, you mean they have the public water for a well. Assuming you're satisfied that it's public water.
No, I'm not.
Yeah, it's, sorry, it's not.
They're concerned. If Mr. Whitney were digging pipes to the hydrant at George Hill Road. Then that straight connection to town water, we wouldn't have any of these issues whatsoever.
I'm talking about the water coming out of that hydrant, that was stated.
It's, it's, it's different, it's different, who owns the water? Whether or not it qualifies for something.
I think there's a suspension being made about the actual liquid, the H D O on the pipes and how it's being accomplished and the infrastructure. Right, so I'm, I'm understanding the piping system, a pipe, a private water.
The water well, or a gas well.
That's, that's right, and we, we put, uh it's regulated by the Department of Environmental Protection, the Water Management Act. Has a guideline for the public water, that requires by the supplier. To have control over the basement, even if it's a non public use location. Which, you know, connects, and what I'm saying is currently we don't have that access and we have nothing successful in. In getting that.
Right, and now we just, right, take a decision. You have a well in your backyard, so that's private, and the water coming out of it, that's private. And I understand it was an infrastructure called piping system, industry, and that can be public or private. And even it's being represented here tonight, there's a piping question here is private, but nonetheless, the water coming out of this pump. And it's being paid for, people consuming. Because one of your gentlemen just testified to it. There's buildings, houses, there's buildings, pumping stations. We just heard that if it breaks. Clear. Who would fix it, unless it was an emergency and the community would force to fix it?
Well, the town's theory that it would be.
Well, if it's a.
And that there would be. Health and safety issue that I'm talking about.
Sorry, I need something. So, um. So still, still the issue is, um, yeah, the water is probably, system is not, uh. At the minimum, I'm not going to want to hear from council, that's it. Because what happens when Melan, Melanson dies, when Melanson dies? Right now, Mr. Melanson is taking care of maintaining this pump station. He's paying for it. What happens when that stops? Not going to be your pump station. So what happens?
Save the old people in the community today.
Correct, there, there's an issue. There's a major issue.
Correct, and so whatever was put in place. Previously. Still needs to be developed, I think.
We are.
George. Doctor, question for Kate. Uh you mentioned that. It has not been possible um to achieve any kind of agreement. With the owner of that system. Despite repeated efforts, could you, could you detail a little bit more about that? I mean, what's the holdup? Is there a disagreement or is it just a lack of communication?
Um, so the town. Have to be pretty. I think purposely because again. The town wants to maintain its ability to be legal, report that we have to, but. Uh we supplied a draft purchase, and I'm sorry, a draft um. Gift for a friendly taking, so the, the taking would have been. For the owner to give it to the town. For zero dollars, or leave it over with the following due. And in the, in the interim, we propose an access. Human and easement. For the utility lines and the pumps. Unfortunately, the, so town meeting, special time meeting was Monday, on the Thursday evening. After the repeated. Fraud. We got copy of our. Proposal back. Friendly with things that the town would cannot accept. Um that. They'll deal with environment flexibility, uh maintaining access for the people who. The town doesn't know if they are qualified or not, et cetera. And so we then wrote back and said that we were. Not interested in pursuing anything more if what we had. Could be certain. And that's where it is for me.
All right, thank you. Let me follow up on that. Um. It would seem to me. That as one, one developer, one private citizen who are not a Jim, you might have the best opportunity. To seek an agreement. From the previous. I, if. If you, if you go to sit down and say, you know, look, here's what we need to do. These are the sticking points and we resolve those things, you might have a better, uh, a better shot at it than someone from town. It's all I'm suggesting.
I don't know. Who knows the baby wants to talk to? I thought I returned your calls. I said, I thought you returned your calls.
I talked to him once before, what kind of this issue?
What? Well, hey, at, at least he knows who you are, he'll talk to you.
Maybe.
Might be worth it.
I won't be talking to you about this. This is what I spoke with him about before.
That's up to you. It does seem that um that that whole situation is a real problem. And one that needs to be addressed one way or another, and I, I. And one that needs to be addressed one way or another. And I I second Mr. France's comments that. You know, you possibly may be in a better position to help address this than the town is. Answer. Simple speculation.
Yeah.
We wanted to ask about it. Yeah, so Scott. Oh, there is no issue tying into the existing. Water main that's on the former Hilltop in Georgetown? No, we are not. Certainly not. No, I mean. God likes that. Public safety very much like that. Um, you know, that's that's the problem. Um. I thought actually that Chief Moody might be here tonight to discuss that. I don't know if he's gonna join us online or not. Um. But.
You want me to get it?
Yeah, and looking at what public safety happens. Since I was in any correspondence. Hi Scott, you're unmuted.
I'm sorry. It it's real hard hearing everybody there. Can you repeat that?
Said you're unmuted. Just so you know.
Yeah, um. I just wanted to add, you know, we we are all four tying in at George Hill. Um, but I do believe if you did tie in at the George Hill intersection, that would require a pump station. Because of the elevation.
Yes, and um.
Same here.
I mean, Bethany.
Different elevation. So we need that pump to be able to provide additional pressure if there is fire.
Scott, could you hear? Could you hear Bethany, Scott?
No, I couldn't.
Bethany, I'm sorry. You probably haven't stand up there and say it all again.
Um. Comes comes if. A little alien. Yeah, there you go. Um, yeah, I was just confirming that um a booster station would be required to provide water to that development. Um. The pressure that's in the hydrant or in the system on George Hill isn't enough if there's fire flow or some large demand on the system.
Okay.
And there's also the distance that I asked to travel, the friction loss through the pipes that it would have to travel up George Hill Road into that development. But it probably does need some additional um pressure to maintain the minimum pressure that's required to be.
And in your opinion. Assuming the legal issues in terms of tying into the hydrant on Hawthorne Lane. If those are resolved, that water meets all those specs in terms of. Pressure um change of of altitude, et cetera.
I do think so. I didn't go through the numbers specifically. But the underlying intent of that pump station was to. Provide uh redundant service to the Eagle Ridge subdivision. Um, but the intent to tie those in through a cross country convention between Hawthorne Land and Eagle Ridge. So if it was designed to sustain that flow. Um, and that demand, I mean, the eleven houses that are being proposed on. Carriage land, eighteen.
Eighteen.
Eighteen. It's still, I don't think it's a substantial difference.
So would if the original plan with Eagle Ridge comes to pass, that's still the case. If that's moved in, there's still a difference. Actually, twenty. Um, because Jim's eighteen plus he's talking about tying in two oh one Hilltop and six seventy nine George Hill.
Not at this point. I don't know who to run based.
Okay, that's. Different thing we seen previously, but that's fine. Um.
We're we're just something different.
I thought I saw something previously in some of the documents that we've been having discussions with them.
Got to end it and tie it.
Okay.
Yeah, I thought it was brought up last week, to be honest.
Yeah, but have you had discussions? We're discussing.
Discussions.
I would expect it to be fine. Um, like I said, I did not look at those numbers myself yet for its supplying flows to Eagle Ridge and for the safety laws. Um, but I wouldn't anticipate there being an issue. Pardon.
Thanks. Anything else?
Um, not on the part.
Or if you do the chair, if someone knows this, so when the town took off all over, did they take the piping system in Hawthorne Way? No, no, they specifically excluded the piping system, just took away.
Right.
Eight.
Eight and yeah, this is.
Excellent. But not in from the leave.
So it's just a drainage event all right now. The drainage event all.
And was there a reason? Is there?
Because the agreement that we had set had been dropped down and needed to be set.
They they did, I see from the warrant, they should have the ability to take it, obviously, they want it later until then.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
And so they take something that actually relieved some of the burden, probably cost a ton of talk. But I I'm sorry, I understand that. They have the ability to take by give, or they have the ability to take it. By expenditure, in this case, probably tell the minimums that the lawyers would save money.
That's the level of spread.
No, I'm just, I'm just.
So.
That's difficult.
Not if I I don't try and understand.
I understand. I understand. You're doing someone relieved of a burden, they don't. That will be that will be able to look.
But that would also probably need to be done separately because this is just the laying out of Hawthorne Land. It doesn't mention a- any of the rest that the town would have to make. I I believe if the town decided to do that, hey, correct me if I'm wrong, but you would go through this process for the pipe.
Yes, so the way that that was written in the law, we didn't have that agreement in place. So in the interest of transparency, even though I have the legal authority to be an argumentary. That we can do it and have that app. Wouldn't forget that. Um. At least that would be my preference. And I think it would be a policy decision for the board.
I would. I just didn't know what was said if it was included, but.
If 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 other wasn't intended to, they fill for the day of work here.
What else is excluded?
It would it was excluded. So when I went over, but it's for in the conversation. It's too much of a team. Let the layout of the site or the layout of the road there. And the easement answer.
I agree.
Um, that didn't pop on. Some dear questions for public safety. Do I have seen any emails from you? And. Yes, ma'am.
Uh, before you follow, I have um they don't get our town. So. Um, a more uh a larger response would be for a county, but the 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 town doesn't own the pipes. Can't authorize a third party to do that. But if a builder has permission for the water. Then that's up.
Thank you. And a question to the chair is. Would you consider anything approval that condition upon having fire emergency points? Question. It's pretty strange. He says, I think it's no.
Uh, I just, it's. Given the current situation with Mr. Melanson. No, I would not feel comfortable without without seeing that rock, without seeing that result. I know you guys are very interested in going forward as expeditiously as possible. I completely understand that. But this water's. Right, you brother, you spent a ton of dark water. Needs to be nailed down.
Right, it just to clarify that either by agreement or in the community of the power state, definitely.
Well, that's. That's not even, but that's not.
Either one who's satisfied with our requirements and make sure the water is available. News. Prove it, something to condition, we follow the piping, either by agreement or evidence.
Um, Mr. Chair, I believe tonight's public hearing, correct if I'm wrong.
Yes.
I don't think it's a night for decision.
No, it's not.
At this point, this is a public hearing.
Yes. Yeah, I think we're a little ways from closing.
Um, I'm sorry for my question, Kate, if that's a lot.
Sure.
Please. Kate, could you um restate the? Lancaster staple. By. Subdivisions regarding. Things that need to be in place in Lancaster. That you went to hear.
Did you?
No, I don't. I re. Sorry, I think it's why. And there and so the purpose behind the asking for that is so that folks listening, paying attention, understand that. We have a very unique. Few lines in our subdivision by law specific to Lancaster. That may or may not appear in other town. That's what I thought started to say, because we just have a tendency to be a little extra special.
The permit granting authority may not definitely to another board or reserve. To itself a future decision of determination of the issuance of. The one thing to the matter before the permit granting authority. Here until this is not our death. Be as a part of as utilities are sent onto the map before the board. Because they're required in the subdivision of the regulation, the board can approve subdivision in deference consideration of the water requirements. So engineer's agreement you you have here. And the even for the. Use of the pipes. And then obviously D W would have to. Agree that, you know, they don't have water. Which I'm sure.
So that basically says that. Until there's an agreement in place. To win the private party to access. That water system. We can't put it in in as a condition. Is that what I'm hearing? Because we have it's 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 in front of us as a permitting of the rate. And we condition it or can't be. That is a subject to him giving water whatever way in other faith.
Oh. We may be supposed to speak to the board. I I don't think. I don't think even if we could condition it that we could. We could do so. Or we couldn't say we're gonna put more water through the system of a compensation that we don't. Without getting D E P to sign on for it to say that we can. Right now. D E D E P has a letter. To the town that's requiring the town to do this. So it's in here a quarter. Yeah. We'll need it so.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So um. Got a number of members in public here, a number of people online. Um, do board members have further questions this way? Good. Um, so would anyone in the room like to speak?
Adam? Sure. Um, I think a couple of meetings ago, we talked a lot about, I'm talking Adams and two oh two Hilltop Road. Thank you. I think a couple of meetings ago, there's a lot of talk about sewage and so sorry, septic and sewer hookups. And I haven't heard anything about that tonight. So I don't know if there's any updates for there was discussion led by you about. Who was gonna be involved in this um. Black of similar to the water. That could be six seventy nine and two oh one. Something was some talk about sewer name, you have to with those two parties. I don't know if those are something a bit ongoing at all. Um. Six seventy nine George Hill and two oh one Hilltop Road. And in in respect of the sewer. Um, six seventy nine George Hill Road has a brand new set set of system. And I believe two oh one Hilltop Road should be. For progress. There. Uh, some of the other issues are. Seen the best of. The. Is building to you in soon. But to. Progress forward in the soon, I guess, I assume. I'm very sorry about that, I understand, but. You sort of have those. You could pay.
Credits.
Credits, right. Um.
But, hang on, just any change in the number up from eleven? Yeah. Thanks.
Okay. Um, the Hollywood is is definitely a good document and the environmental analysis that. Um, came in. Was very recent, September twenty twenty four. And maybe this is a question for Concom. Will there be another environmental analysis in spring? If I could. Based on tomorrow's lock through or to be determined.
We're not conservation.
It's. No, I'm. They sort of have that common communication system. Uh, I have no communications from conservation, no. Requirements. Um. And the one thing I I would say about that is. Concom asked for a continuance. Because the neighbors haven't been worried of changes in the watering septic. So we did that continuance the last Tuesday. And they've asked for more info and haven't decided. And I know there's sort of an order of things that have to happen.
No, there's not. It's certainly a faulty decision. There's nothing in the bylaws that requires how we search this. There is nothing in our bylaws that requires going to be done before the other. That's that's a best practice. That's unofficially.
Yeah. So it is absolutely a best practice. One of the reasons we do it is because if Concom rules on something and then changes Mr. Whitney's plans in some way. Then he's got to come back and do stuff all over, which is expensive and time consuming for the act. Understood? So that's. One of the priorities.
I've read some of the exchange that much.
That's in general, that's not how we do it. I can appreciate your desire to spend extra money.
We have not, we've not. Taken up over collectively discussed that.
Further questions?
Um, just a sort of an overall, so when the former owner of this property and the current, who who has who's the current owner of two oh one. When he was planning his sports care facility, he met with a lot of the neighbors. Um, and I've never heard from this developer or the property owner about what's planned. The only way I found out about this is through these meetings. And we've already talked about, you know, not everything's been shared in a compelling manner. So it's not, you know, it's not a requirement, I'm sure. But I think it, you know, if you're talking about best practices, just reach out to us, like tell us what you're up to. I think would have would have set this in a better path. And still open these conversations to everyone.
Well. It's making contact information and uh. It has to check. Sharp on this stuff. Anyone else in the room? Anyone else online? Questions, comments online? Please raise your hands. Oh, I'm seeing you. Okay. So um.
Chief Moody did join. Did we have questions for them?
Well, he was, he told me um when I last saw him that he was gonna show up for this because he wanted to make comments.
Right there.
So um if he wants to make comments, love to hear from him.
Uh, yes, I I apologize for my my absence. Time got away from me. Um. I in in reference to uh the water supply for uh the development on Hilltop Road, um I I'm less concerned. Um, about where it comes from and more concerned about trying to guess. When we could get uh all our ducks in a row to be able to bring it across the street from Hawthorne Lane. Uh, I I I don't foresee uh the town being able to control uh all of the variables on that. So in absence of that. Um. The the more solid plan, at least from public safety standpoint, would be to bring it up from the the hydrant at the intersection of George Hill and in Hilltop. I hope that clarifies uh statements that were made earlier.
It does. Thank you.
Chief.
Yes, the chief, Commissioner. Sir.
I'm I'm have, I'm I'm here. Um, the the volume is coming in and out.
Oh, I'll I'll use my inside voice then. Would you be kind enough to put that in an email so we can add it to project five?
I would be happy to. Yeah, I will get that to you uh first thing in the morning.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, um. Brian, do you want to address Brad's comments?
Cool, um. I can ask Bethany, um, we had a discussion earlier today, uh, this is concerning. I can ask Bethany, um we had a discussion earlier today. Uh this is concerning stormwater issues. Uh and if our Brad's online, I think you guys both understood that those comments were.
Yeah, sure. I can talk about um what we had talked about earlier today.
Mm hmm.
Um they are related to some of the um drainage plans. We took a closer look at them. Um we have support questions about um some sort of minor things like drainage pipe material that are being used. There's some inconsistencies in the plans. Um we also had Brad had noticed that there is a very shallow depth of cover on the drainage pipes. Um. So we're going to be, I'm going to be summarizing that letter and asking that they clarify the cover depth and the pipe material. Um we also had questions about the landscaping and the bio retention cells. Um and uh related to that somewhat of the design of the wick drain that is um looks like it's being that elevations look like the wick drain is going down into where the seasonal high water table was inter.
Mm hmm.
Um so we have some questions about that separation and whether or not that was intentional. Um and also uh we are going to want to discuss with the uh applicant's engineer um about infiltration. And so originally they had proposed some infiltration, I think on the site. And then um they had gone and done some test pits, observed fairly shallow groundwater, but not impossible shell. Um but infiltration was really taken out of the design completely. So there is a question about ways that we can reintegrate it into the design um instead of just dismissing it as possibility. Good. I think that those are.
Those were those comments so far. Once it's stressed that it is due to due stormwater.
Yeah, and I apologize for not getting my comments back to her. I know um for our back and trying to get in touch with each other. Um but I did want to talk to Brad before I responded.
Great. Okay, thank you. And so you guys clearly are continuing to talk. There's no questions from the board. Thank you. So it seems you guys still have some work to do. One more, Brian. Uh Adam Z and two oh two.
Oh, sorry, we're just gonna be last name again.
Sam Z is in zebra, A N D is in doctor. Sam. Um so this is from actually from a neighbor who's celebrating with his wife's birthday. And I can't join this. Uh the environmental report conducted recently states that perno pools need to be identified in spring. The assumption of possible species limiting possible perno pools not being present is just speculation, not facts. And it could be a concom, man. So it's definitely a concom. All the perno pools, all that kind of stuff, it's all concom. You'll be asking Tom Seidenberg to recognize.
Okay, um so I do, I did receive a communication from said Tom Seidenberg, not as chair of the commission, the constable of the vision commission, but as a private resident. Want to read that?
Um you can or you can distribute it to the board and
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. And yeah, we want you to read it in direct.
Okay. Uh yes, Chairman Streeter and members of the planning board. I am writing to offer my comments on the Hawthorne Hill definitive subdivision hearing before the planning board. I offer these comments as a private citizen. I hope the board does not offer or agree to a homeowners association for the road. I have seen several occasions where infrastructure intended to be private has been put forward on an article at town meeting for the sewer commission for acceptance as public infrastructure. I hope the planning board recognizes the inevitability of this process, whether intended by the board or not. Therefore, I urge the board to resume the road and related infrastructure will become owned by the town, not recording by ensuring that all of Lancaster's performance standards are met so that the town can accept the road without concern. Bullet number two, I hope board considers who will be responsible for the stormwater basins when the project is complete and how they will be maintained. I regularly walk through two subdivisions with associated stormwater basins. It is clear to me that these basins are not maintained, so I question whether these basin basins would fulfill their proper functions in an exceptional storm. I believe it is standard for an operation and maintenance plan to be provided with a stormwater permit. I hope the board considers who is responsible for following the rule on that plan and how performance is good. I think that the permit conditions should assign maintenance to the town as part of road acceptance along with suitable ownership or easements. I do not think that maintenance should become the homeowner's responsibility if the basins are located on building lots. Indeed, I do not believe the basement should be on easements at all or on land intended to be conveyed to the town along with the road. Thank you for your consideration, Tom Seidenberg, seven forty eight Georgia Road, Lancaster.
So you're already building all the roads to town spec, I believe. So so that part has been taken care of. You might want to consider his comments about the retention basis. Um if you haven't been provided with a copy of the letter, um sure, Brian, I'll send it.
It's part of determining the basis holding to the town.
Yeah. I don't know if that's working for the plan. Between time and the number of the budget they can have. But but at that point, but at Tom's Tom's point was that at that point, they would be on separate land that would be conveyed and would not be easements. Read his thing, go over to Tom's.
Yeah, we did. On this, we did the doesn't take away the land you're lost.
Oh. Well, I would say, you know. Well, there is a Well, you gotta get through town meeting first, but.
Yeah.
I don't.
I mean, the thing is, you know, if you had a two hundred unit development, then you can guarantee you get things to town. Or you get the two hundred units. No, I'm not going to worry about you.
You'd like.
No, my works are maxed out of my dynamics, but. Oh, okay. So. Okay, are there other comments either online or in the room? And so you guys have some back and forth to do on stormwater. Be back in on in two weeks if you would like.
Yeah.
Yeah, gosh, if you get a hold of Gary.
Yeah, could you let him know because give you two weeks to close that deal.
He's got ears in the street.
That's what I did. Oh.
It's all by Melan. No one wants. There lies the problem.
Well, we have to be far too young yesterday.
Yes, two weeks from yesterday.
So I think the question remains, the a plan bring water to the site. I think there is viable options. I think whatever options you a platform, you know, I think we need a full plan, you know. Without question, engineered plan. If it's the woman land, I think that the, you know, I think we stated the preferences to tie into George Hill Road, bring it up to to the site. Uh but it you know, whatever plan you use, you just need to have that um, you know, it needs to be a plan, part of a plan, be engineered, that's the drawn out, you know, it has to be not just a it's not a concept of a plan.
Yeah. So um. And beyond that, um Jim, if there are no other sewer, this is a a hypothetical, you may not know the answer, but if there are no other sewer credits available, would you proceed with septic? Or the lots you couldn't get sewer for?
I don't know.
But well, that's why I said it was a hypothetical. Actually, I think you asked me here in the past. Is that true? Obviously, it must be on my mind. Okay, so um somebody has to formally request. I'll remember this. Thank you. Any discussion? So um. Do you do that?
I do.
Hey, I do think I'm going to continue with that. But there.
Oh, okay.
So I'll call for the vote at this point. Uh and Gina?
Yes.
Jordan? Yeah, Shane. Mike? Kenya? Now I will guess twelve of the five voters. I think we figured out, say that's absolute last minute, he suddenly popped up and said, hey, wait, uh, I didn't ever vote. Yeah.
All right. Okay.
There was a little strange.
Yes.
Question.
Gee, if they decided to to I don't know, tie it to the hydrant down like four banks and
Mm hmm.
And it's like that's in the center of the sewer service. Who's responsible for funding to there's that stuff?
He would be responsible. When he would be responsible and where and I would probably go from the hydrant. That's up to this.
So did whether did whether it already happened, where you want some of the land else? We've built and um Gary taking over or would you build something?
Gary, no.
Right, he would have to do the same job.
Yes. That's my understanding.
And then Tom ready to the problem here. They have a mission here, Gary answering.
Thank you, Chairman.
Gary could finish.
Okay.
If Gary could just finish his job, pay his taxes, and give me a agreement placement, would we have this?
So so the question we
Kendra, the the problem is that's one of well, then maybe something online to get Gary on there.
The uh, I mean, I don't know if that's a question we can ask, but you know, your question.
Well, if you're right, who's responsible for the funding of that? That would be the development.
Right, so then once once it's developed, does the town take over the maintenance and stuff, right? Or would that be to the water department, just like
And the other question, Dan. The other question is if the developer purchases and the infrastructures, does that allow other? Because obviously Eagle Ridge was interested in tying into it. Do they have to assume some of the funding to do that as well? If they tie into I I have absolutely no idea how it works with Eagle Ridge. I I really don't. Um what I do know is that the developer would be responsible for building the infrastructure wherever they tie in.
The initial builder, but if someone else ties into that same pumping station, wouldn't they have a responsibility to fund it as well?
Don't know how that.
I have one for you. And would be sure.
That's a good question. Yeah, yeah, I think it's a, it might be a stupid question. I don't have an answer for you.
Public water. Private system. Okay, we're we're on agreement. Page fourteen of the subdivision regulations, article seven. When connection to a public water system is not proposed, information indicating why such connection is not feasible, description of provision to be made for water for firefighting and information adequate to allow the determination of compliance with the regulation regarding portable water quality and quantity. So we don't that is a private system or public water. That article speaks to it. It's not a public system. There is access to a public system at George Hill and Hilltop. Is that favorable cost wise to the developer? Probably not. But that article speaks.
It's feasible.
That's why I asked Kate to repeat our very special language that we need to like.
Right. And so and that's in the same document. She's got to find me the other one, but that is on if I fall asleep reading this.
I don't know how it applies. I don't know how it applies to the development. No, when I was building my the town came to me and said, you're responsible with hook up to municipal water to get it available. I said, no, I'm not. You can go right to the state website. It's a new one bottom of water on a private property. You can do this.
Hmm.
So I don't know how that applies to.
He can put in well. He he just like you. I mean, I assume you put in well.
I did.
Yeah, so he can put in wells. There was a plan for wells and septic that we introduced.
Right, right, right.
And then he's gone to the town water plan where everyone likes better. Because that aquifer testing, Adam, I'm sure all the other neighbors will tell you that flow up there is difficult.
Well, just be clear, I would have gone to municipal water, but there's so much ledge running up to my property that then unbelievably costly.
I think it's a single home subdivision.
No, I get you. I am completely
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, and I I think the distinction there is when the public water supply is not feasible. So in your case.
Right, well, you got several hooks down further.
Yeah.
That are on private.
But they don't have ledge. Is that the case?
Well, you want ledge, but what I'm saying is to bring public water up a three thousand foot long driveway. You're gonna have to put a manhole in uh deal with blasting, most likely. It wasn't practical since I couldn't get four feet in. You know, I could go four feet per second, but then I'd have like you know, two hundred feet of ledge. So there you go. I understand, you know, whole concept of it. I just understand what's available and what isn't.
Well, there, because you know, something is available.
Yeah, I get it. So I
I mean, listen, if we really want to push it into another pump house, we have to start raining all over again.
Well, we won't.
Before.
Well, we won't have Hawthorne Rain all over again because we have a qualified building commissioner at this point. And whatever things will be actually recorded at the right time. So we won't have people getting mortgages without having
I understand there's a whole bunch of things that need to become compliant, kind of. I get it. But it doesn't make sense to me that um we own the water supply, but don't own the plumbing that goes to. So in the event that there isn't see and the owner isn't compliant with the family or on the book anyway.
Well, what it really boils down to is somebody not finishing their job is making it a giant issue for somebody else who maybe wants to do the right thing on the gate.
Right.
And that's why.
Yeah, I do too. I I I think we all have it.
I think right now he's paying the price for that now pieces.
Yeah. I mean, I get it. The the Hawthorne Lane hookup would be the closest gate and make the most sense. So.
Well, it'd be, it would certainly be a missed expense. I raised the hydrant there. Let's put it
Well, it'd be the most practical too, because they have the amount of water with pressure and everything to
If it were a town system, if somehow you know, Melan said somehow convey it to the town or the town said, yes, we're going to take it and make everybody happy. Then there isn't an issue. So that the flow is connected into a town system.
Oh, this isn't a town.
Well.
But he did come into town hall last week for building permit.
How can you get a building?
He didn't get a building permit.
Yeah, I mean, we did, we did just pass a file.
I love our to garage.
You know, okay, well, uh is there anything else we wish to discuss about Zero Hilltop or this particular point? So. Okay, so in that case, let us um resume our next hearing for eight forty two Sterling Road and Row Y on the cable. Did you bring pictures of the slab?
They're left.
We can shoot all this. Yeah. Pretty cool. There we go. Well, it's a slab, you know, that that was which is, it's hard for you guys to be able to do that.
We've got twenty nine people that are truly outstanding.
Good evening, I'm here.
I do.
Dave officially. Hello. My D D. Thank you for saying this. We appreciate it. Now, um received a hand review from Bethany at that right park in support.
I didn't like this.
Sure. Didn't send anything back until midday Thursday. Actually, I sent our small stuff last night. So I was optimistic that we might hear that today, but I didn't really think I would. The well, uh Bethany's priories being related to ending storm which really doesn't have a lot to do with building. The installation storm chambers reaching the stormwater basin. Really depend on having the building in place, right? Building has to finish. Depend on having the building in place, right, building has to be finished, you know, those things. Now, I believe that the decision is probably today, David received the last, but the information event. I had to break the building first. And which I just updated in fairness to Brian and Mike Silva, um, we just got the calculations for the fire system. They already got the electrical, they already got the plumbing, um, this is the last piece, which just needs to be ratified by the certified fire engineer, all the, we did the full test and had it calculated by our fire engineer and, um, we have enough flow with the hydrant, we have enough flow that we can just add on to the existing, um, hydrant that's moving currently. So this report, I can give a copy to Brian, to the board, the same thing I have always, I will forward to Brian as well as Mike Silva anymore.
Okay, to Stephen, Brian, okay.
Thanks for the.
Now, thank you. I would suggest that, that our information really doesn't play, it's quite a ways down the road. And, uh, the steel for the buildings arrived, um, a, a beautiful stone path has been fabricated to stack the steel line so that it stays clean and if we get to it without creating a lot of, like, gross material. Think they'd like to ask for some sort of structural approval to allow them to start to erect the steel. Uh, because it's hidden gold and time is ever. And as far as everything else goes. I'd be happy to meet with Bethany and have our, uh, engineering staff sit down and just go through it. And how we're gonna do whatever Bethany would like.
Before we do that, just, we have a lot bigger audiences, we're very popular tonight, there must be nothing on TV, but.
Well, in all fairness, if you look, at least three of our audience is us.
Let, let's not have an ego move.
And then you have to, yeah, okay, and that's the.
But certain people worked on last month.
Presby system?
It's not like the Presby system, no, Presby system was magic. We're not really treating, we're just infiltrating, and those chambers should be digging up raw. And if they look, they.
Are you gonna decorate it for Halloween?
Uh, well, uh, uh, we could probably get quite a bit of a floral house. In, I don't think those. I think we're looking at thirty chambers.
Um, my, my personal preference, given the timing, is that if you and Bethany can get everything banged out, so all these documents can be complete in the next two weeks, so we could then get this off the table entirely, would be great, um. We, we definitely rushed things to get you guys the slab, because you don't have temperature sensitive that is, as, as before these guys.
Yeah.
Um. Steel's a little bit less temperature sensitive, so I'd really like to just take the extra two weeks, tie up everything with engineering, so we can just put a bow and say it's done. That would be my, my preference, I'll put it over to the rest of the board for their thoughts.
Well.
What did Mike Silva's? Uh, Mike Silva had commented, I don't know if he's been to the site, I don't know, uh, what his comments are, uh, what I will say, in all fairness, and I, I appreciate it, towards, um, efficiency in getting us to this point. Uh, from the engineer who, uh, viewed the slope, from the, you know, all the stuff that we've done, from the, um, you know, previous discussions about the, uh, retention basin that obviously was neglected, that, you know, I could come before you and said, it will be done. Uh, my opinion relative to storm water management is that, um, my opinion is that, is that the steel doesn't affect storm water management. Uh, we've agreed that obviously all the criteria and what the P E who did all the geo, um, testing on the slope and everything else, gave us the letter that, uh, which I believe that was received, um, so my, my personal opinion, once again, is that, um, even though some of these things, to the chairman's point, have not been buttoned up and, you know, signed off on road to stormwater, uh, on the other hand, we do, as you, as you brought up before, do have standard engineered plans that are, um, meeting the criteria of the building and are not structurally dangerous or, uh.
Well, my stand, my standpoint on this is really not, I'm not a builder, I'm not a commission, I have building inspectors credentials, but I'm not a pound building inspector.
Correct.
For me to say, yeah, you can go ahead and put up a steel structure, I don't have a problem with that, but I have a problem with he needs to look at that first, that's his, and not, not any of us. Mike's, okay.
I appreciate that, thank you, guys.
Well, definitely, sure. The, what Michael has just put out here, uh, I think that if, uh, Michael has all the information pertaining to the building, then he should be able to issue a willing permit with the charter. Uh, the site man and stormwater, they're separate things. They all need to come together, but they have their own, they have their own little blocks.
I'm pretty sure that Mike's cannot permit pro system, um, did, you know, that Mike looked at, he needs to get approvals, you know, he has, has the approvals in place of the. Firestorm, or whatever, border help, those three being, and those need to be checked and approved before you can go ahead and issue a building.
Absolutely, well, I'm just, it's right there, that, you know, the board might have. Looking at this.
So where do you got the border help?
Do you have border?
They don't have any border help interaction.
Nothing border help, what about climate?
Uh, we got a major determination, they're limited to your energy weapons and arts.
They have the idea.
Okay, they, too.
Then it's just the, so it's really just the stormwater.
Uh huh.
And, um, you know, Bethany's still working on her responses or comments to your response.
Oh, what I would, is that, you know, our thermal base is gonna be up here. And I get back the road so that we can sort of shrink the activity area a little bit. Everything drains over to the pond. I tried to set the pond, so it's extremely maintenance grade, user friendly. A long way.
During depth of groundwater issues, the separation issues.
The ground water is probably nothing.
Depth separation.
They don't really get into the water till you go down into the fire completely, and you're down at, say, the elevation with the ground rocks, and this. Let's just try it at the phone.
Bethany, I know you're still working on your comments, but do you have anything you have at this point, or?
Um.
And again, in all fairness, the, the building's better, the last piece that he was, he was waiting for, which again, difference of opinion, but it's still necessary, is the, is the fire suppression, which we just got from the design, signed off today, and we're again waiting, stamp is imminent from the, uh, the agency who's actually gonna install it, but all, meets all the criteria of what we're doing, so. Fairness to him, yeah, we just got the next day. Uh, I will, obviously, Brian's got a copy over there, I will email Mike directly in the morning, the, uh, PDF, um, but in the last two weeks, I've had no conversation, communication relative to anything.
That's all engineering as well.
Yes, right.
Yeah, Bethany, if you have time, uh, I'll get you a patty, oops, and, uh, if we can sit down, we can be ready, Monroe, my office, your office. Uh, Thursday be good.
I mean, the only other thing I can think of, um, when we had our meeting in July was public safety, you know, civil attended that with the chief, with the commissioner, so, see any issues with that, because he brings any issues back, so, as far as that aspect.
I, I wouldn't think so. I mean, my basic concern is that we'd like to see applicants finish the peer review process and not have us do things in the middle of that process. Um, that, you know, that's, I, I think, a pretty reasonable way of doing business, um. So it would be my personal preference, and allow the rest of the board to speak for themselves, that we spend the next couple of weeks completing that, so it's all done. So when we come in, you've signed off on everything, all the comments have been met, whatever approval you may need, just, I don't know if you need your fire suppression engineered plans reviewed by anyone?
Just, just to be standing by the, you know, the design's been done, it's been sent to the, um, the sign off from the engineer, the stamping, which is imminent the next day or two, they were sent last week, I got a copy of it today after Halloween, so.
So I can say that give the gig one thing.
Right.
Yeah. So, um, yeah, it would be my preference, spend the two weeks, get all the approvals, at that point, we can say we're done. And the fire department will approve that, you know, you guys should be in touch with Mike Silva, so you can tell Mike that it's gonna be wrapped up, and where are we in terms of, like, getting the building permits, so you guys can get right to work. I, I mean, I don't, I don't want it to lay the project unreasonably in any way, but it's really important for the board to insist that we go through the engineering process. Especially because you do get to port slap, which is the really temperature sensitive. We both know that we can screw things on later in season, it's just older and old things, it isn't doable.
Yeah, I won't, I won't deny that, you know, I'm, I'm not, again, I'm not gonna argue or debate that point, you're right.
So, well, because with concrete, that's not.
No, I mean.
So, so that's why.
Yeah, I understand.
So, but what is the rest of it?
I already said, I don't see steel being a problem, but it's not my decision, make that choice though. Know what I mean, and he makes, you don't have all your intricate parts in order. Not my decision, I know you're jacked, I know you have everything in line, like all the boxes are checked. Um, here, my hands are tied.
Kendra, did you manage those?
I'll send them.
John, I noticed in your comments, uh, you said that all the stormwater activity basically commences when the building is finished. And while that makes perfect sense, I mean, I understand the logic of that. I, I wouldn't wanna get into a situation where the building was completed and the, and the stormwater problems, one after another. It would basically prevent the building from, you know, being occupied. So, you know, I agree with the chairman, that getting all this stuff wrapped in one package, uh, will be of benefit to everyone in the end.
Uh, the, uh, erosion control, bottles and bales all been replaced. Uh, and, uh, like, with the installation of the chambers, the building wall. Uh, I think that you don't wanna do that until all the traffic has been cleared out of the area there, true, uh, and, um. Where the stormwater basin is over here, uh, you know, with people coming in and out, think, uh, I don't think it'd take more than three, four days to construct it. Basin, they had, um, I don't think that you'd wanna do that all you've got. Interesting, and, uh, the first order of business in the storm basin after standing it out, is to deploy the erosion control. I, I don't perceive a perusion catastrophe.
No, no, I, I believe it, not us friends.
And then go ready.
One of these.
Thank you. Well, can we ask?
Uh, I, I, I'll go back to me. You tried earlier, because we do have other people on, weren't here last time, could you please, once again, state what the purpose of this building is?
It's a warehouse facility, how's wrong with your?
So there's no manufacturing going on inside, we have no spillage issue, it is just raw goods.
Correct.
Thank you.
We might have the, the manufacturing is going on, but now it's being pinned by the fact that this space is available.
But the idea is just, uh, where there'd be no additional employees, no additional traffic, it's basically saying non-employees, just from.
Bigger.
Yeah.
Yeah, we mentioned you, we want more. Listen, sometimes I just made it in a really simple real estate related way, considered by day job, it makes sense, so, I have one, and, I maybe.
But thank you for explaining that, so you would.
That, bigger cabinets, we, we, you're asking for a walk-in closet, a bedroom, a room.
Yep, that should be a source. That would be a little furniture available.
There you go, perfect, uh, just relying on my quote, you said that, that is where the arrow is pointing to the slot. Adjacent to server or pressure.
A lot of.
Well, um, that's where the stormwater base is gonna be.
I really have, I'm skeptical, it's a bit of a fill, but per last, it's more of a depression.
Okay.
Per the last plan, that was not completed, to the chairman's point last night, um, that's still one of the, one of the drawing, that's that need to be completed from the last build. On the sixty thousand, originally back in twenty eighteen, which is gonna be twenty eighteen.
Okay. So correct if I'm wrong, so maybe it is on here as potentially eight and a half feet deep?
Uh, well, then, pretty, pretty well, so.
So my question is, given the proximity to the road, again, I understand that the majority of that immediate space is industrial, commercial businesses. Will there be a safety fence erected to keep somebody from inadvertently tumbling into that basement?
Well, I'll, I'll follow up, we have retention bases at seven sixty-seven adjacent to the roadway, and it wasn't, we weren't required, and we haven't had anybody tumble in there in fifteen years.
Are we on the. The party?
No, no, for no reason, um, so, to answer your question, I've got three retention bases that we were, um, that we were asked to put up in twenty twelve and twenty fifteen, when we did two other additions, but there's no fence in that stuff, I mean, it's a lot of trees. And there's some fencing up front that if you hit it, you probably not like it, but as far as, yeah, as far as that retention basin, there are, there is some pre-line there that, um, you know, I mean, somebody could walk in the other one just as well as this one.
Yeah, well, I think that for that concerns, in a motor vehicle, that's everybody's.
Could be happy to look at it, I mean.
I'm a drive.
The fence might inhibit somebody from getting out.
Well, that, yeah, yes, yes, yeah. More like if there was a car accident, a car going in, but if there's still.
There's.
Free, that would be pretty, like a bar.
Telephone holes and other things that.
They probably would if they get the basement enough.
Oh, oh, I know.
That would suck.
That, that type of driving, yeah, so, they could usually drive it in their high.
Only in fact. All right, no, that was just a quick question.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Is there any, are there any other loose ends that we need to be thinking about here, such that we can't get this all wrapped up? Next time, I mean, if we can get a draft, we can get a draft order of conditions circulated to the board, so that we're in a position to approve that.
That's how I work. And the one, the one piece was the fire system from a permitting perspective relative to all the stormwater, which, like I said, uh, we got all the data and everything, it's just, yeah, realizing that has data.
Question about those systems, is this just the standard water system, or is this also one of the foam systems? And the reason I'm asking about phones, because you hear all this stuff about PFAS and use in firefighting.
Those are just ones.
That, according to Brooke, that was the right answer.
This might be more of a question for you, right? Just returning back to this. Just returning back to Mr. Simon's letter, does this require a maintenance plan for the base?
Well, usually stormwater, yeah, I mean.
Cause the town is one. He can't even tell.
I mean, I think, you know, like an operation, that's always part of the stormwater management plans, like the O N M.
Right.
Part of that. It doesn't mean the town takes care of it. It's just, it's just describes how I was, should be maintained.
Right, well, I was trying to get that out at the other hearing, but it didn't quite make its way past my teeth, that's why I'm asking it here. Having that operations O N M is standard for our work conditions, whatever, so they still want our basements. So therefore, Mr. Way will not be putting them on a separate system and giving them to the town.
Yeah.
Nor do we want.
Yeah.
This will be entirely within the Monroe property, again, hoping it will all be grassed and. They beautifully have a landscape put in there.
It's always an impeccable shape. Everybody was.
Well. Well, there were issues in the.
Yo, we drive a highway.
I mean, there were, there's a landscaping plans for. I think we can speak to this a little bit about, you know, at the, in the basins themselves that. Require less maintenance, as opposed to just, you know, dredging it, but I think there are some landscaping, best practices. Plants, species, whatever they may be, that will populate the.
Grass seems to grow there, and plants don't do well. Even with with the water. It's great grass, but that works fine.
It works.
So.
Okay, um, yeah, I would really like to be able to close the hearing and vote on the order of conditions. Um, in two weeks, thirteen days to be precise. Um, so if you guys can do your various back and forths, John, if you can. You know, aggressively close out your checklist and ideally try to do it all before, you know, no later than a week from today. So that we've got time to go through it and if anything's forgotten or whatever, make sure it's all done. Um, we should probably be calling Mike Silva and giving him an update.
That's what I would do.
So once you get him to, you know, that should facilitate.
I will. Can we formally request that we come back on the twenty eighth?
Twenty eight. Jackson, John, Mike?
Yes.
Kendra?
Yes.
Regina?
Yes.
George?
Yes.
Frank?
Yes.
So great, hopefully we can get this all tied up and, uh, get you guys out of here before the weather gets here and call. Okay?
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate the word, Scott.
Thank you.
Good night.
And I'll try and stay on your pace.
Okay.
We see a lot of that, Frank.
Well, I help in the air.
Four, five levels across the street and seven sixty seven, if you can play around.
There's no fun, that has to be made.
Why, but the wicked dreams, they never any.
It's still for me, it's like riding through the desert. I just raised my suspicion and. Thanks, Don, my Mark.
I'm definitely, definitely consider those five hundred year storms, that sort of thing.
All the questions.
Hey, John, you guys aren't taking well fifteen percent impervious surface cover, are you?
The, uh, I think they asked for waiver for that. If we had, they.
Well, just just follow up on that.
So we got on the order of thirty percent open.
Yeah.
That is really, um, tough to work from.
It don't seem as being an issue, but we wanna do this right and not miss.
So. Uh, but I know that we asked for a waiver.
Yeah, the last one.
Doesn't make it pop back in the.
Do we still need Bethany or can she come?
Thank you, Bethany.
So much for coming.
Okay, so. It's not. Jesse, Josh, we need to meet here.
Yeah. For now, you're dealing with Mike's.
Got a plan.
Yeah, to see, now this is.
Weekend.
I've been here a number of times and you never had the news.
And everybody's learned very soon.
Well, should have one here. Yeah, to show, yeah.
Gift one to the down.
Yeah, we don't.
We're, we're not supposed to shave down apples.
Everybody's on the. Remember, remember that light?
Talk to them, well.
It's on the side of down, yeah.
I didn't know what you were talking about, so I was already. Getting railed in sterling, uh, and came back after that, like, go ahead. You're absolutely right, it's on the northern. And we've asked, when they do the base, it's on the light thing.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, that's all it takes, just.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Um, Edward, I could do a practice for over fifteen years and, you know, I'm on those sites. A year and a half ago, I drove a truck into one of the holes.
When I have my big Ford car in the building, we, because we have other D C R land, I had to get a big front end owner to come in and. Trail around the mop pit once a year, like down to the dirt. And, well, I'm, I'm not, I'm actually kind of admitting it in public, my tractor might have ended up down there with me on it because. I wasn't used to the pit being long, or like the pit not being full, so I might have.
You might have, or you did.
I might.
Might have, yeah.
You did.
Allegations have been made.
My cat, there may be a witness, maybe I.
You were in there.
The video clips all A I.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, let's talk about, um, getting the order of conditions for. When on.
Just for everyone to believe, Mr. Peter Ford is online, can we, if I make it, can we believe, um. Mr. Ford is online with us, who is with Go Venture. That's right.
Yep, I'm here.
Um, so I, did I, did everyone have a copy of this with them? I made extra copies. If it's a more hard copy. So, uh, so the way I usually do these is pretty much go through. Find a simple decision, there's all the boiler plates that we always improve, boiler plate conditions, and then try to get to. I try to put in or attempt to, think of everything you can in terms of what particular to this site. So for instance, um. For pre-construction, we're talking about the endorsement of the, of food flex development plan by the lake, which we provide. You know, so putting in anything that's particular to this particular site, um, for this product is, gets worked into the conditions. Uh, here I, um. Structure of it has reconstruction things that we need to see, reconstruction, nerve construction, and then post-construction. It have, Frank, maybe you have a good point that some of these things I think I had, like, or what I helped. Items ten through thirteen, ten through thirteen should be in, um. The pre-construction as opposed to construction. I feel right, we open it and I reopen it. Uh, and then. Here. The real. So conditions twenty twenty one, twenty two. Really direct what we need to see from the applicant in terms of preservation of open space. Uh, and the maintenance of that. So again, the town. Not, except would not accept ownership, so this would either be part of some H O A plan or some other maintenance plan, with the owner would. Would need to present to the town before approval, or present to the planning board. Uh, and when I provided these to Tom Orbit, he, uh, wrote back that he would like to see, um. You know, if for instance, right now, the applicant is standing on. As per the application, uh, to own and. To own and rent these residential units. However, should something change and they convert to ownership, we would include some of these conditions. Uh, and as a, as a. Change of ownership structure, so for instance, you're wondering, whoever included it as twenty twenty one and twenty two. So I don't know if there's any questions or comments on these, or wanna go through them one by one.
If, you know, we can talk, maybe the board needs to think about acceptability. It's right now, there's one owner for all four units. Do we want to somehow have a condition that they have to come back with the homeowners? Or just say, with the H O A in place now, you can sell off the units whenever you want and you don't have to come back to us or anybody else, the H O A is there.
Who would, if we. Didn't make them do it now, who would be responsible for making sure it got done later and could be?
It would have to be, it'd have to pick it up on the title.
So would that become an association, like an H O A?
Yeah, it's, it's basically an H O A, so what you would be doing is you would have a four unit H O A, except to start. One person's gonna own all the units.
They're picking gold off as individually.
But you can sell them off individually, and at that point, you don't have to do anything else.
Well, we have to look at it two ways, they could sell each condo off, so making four separate condos, right? But what if they sell them as two, two families? So he buys two family, I buy.
It'll be.
E- even if they sell one of them to their best friend from elementary school, you can't get all the rest.
That just ends up releasing them as far as they're, um, committed to whatever exterior maintenance or. Yard maintenance, whatever, that would all have to be designated.
Well, he, he's gonna have to put in a, a condo. Um. Condo association, which is, which overrules an H O A.
Well, the condo association shouldn't be.
A condo association is gonna, yeah, so the condo association is gonna determine what's included in the condo fee, if there's a condo fee at all. Who's responsible for snow plowing, maintenance, what's included in exterior maintenance, because we have. A bunch of condos built in the eighties where their condo association documents made the. Association responsible for roofs and exterior siding, however, the condo owners are responsible for doors, windows, desks. So that, but that documentation follows the entirety of the complex, not individual condos. Um, so we'd be, we'd be specifying the condo association versus each other.
Yeah, that's good to strange things.
They're very different. And then you have, you know, the master insurance, you all have to send, and anybody's attorney, who definitely should know, you have. Um, dictate who's responsible for master, so, or the master insurance. So in Pittsburgh, um. Outside, just over the playground area, there are several freestanding duplexes. There's also a handful of them on very small lots, or I have clients who live in one of them. And it's, it's a very short condo doc, but it says that basically the condo owner is responsible for everything. But they have to share the same master insurance for the, everything from the walls out with the adjacent unit owner. So, so then, but everything else is on each individual homeowner, so you'll get homeowner A, who's brave, keeps the yard organized, tidying and shuffling their. Sidewalks, driveways, and then sometimes you get option B, which is a permit that doesn't involve and everything looks fast. And there's no recourse for A to go against B because it's not specified in the condo docs that the owners are being. Responsible for everything except the shared master insurance policy.
Right. Andrew, when you mentioned, um, snowplow, it tickled what I. Who's gonna own the roof?
Uh, that I think we determined was gonna be part of the.
We just. Plus the roof.
It's not.
Yeah, I was thinking that.
Yeah, so it's technically a driveway, so again, whoever's building these, if it's this person, or if they sell the project to somebody else, and another. Builder actually builds the structure, tho- those condo docs should specify. And this is why they do condo fees, condo fees more often than not include refuse removal, snow removal, landscaping. Um, um, exterior maintenance, but they can also say you can't have a holiday lights in your windows.
Right.
Um, there's a couple out there where you can't put an A C in the front, you can't see the A Cs from the road. I have, um, another flag, you can't do a flag, you can't have a decoration.
They put a left turn, you can only ship white cars.
Yeah.
And with a.
So I, I, I'd be more on condo association documents versus an H O A.
You have a. Ten.
There's.
I don't.
I, 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 in my personal business, um. I have one that I can pull, I can pull the one from Orange, cause it's.
I live in one, so I can.
Well, the, the one that I. Well, that, in my opinion, it's too liberal, um.
But these guys can get one from their own.
Yeah.
I mean, and realistically. And not gonna put you in a position of potential personal liability.
Well, sure, yeah, I mean, any good attorney should be able to get.
I'm just thinking in terms of us being more, get familiarized with what it looks like, so when it's presented.
Oh, I can send you over an example, just so you can read through on part S and G.
Yeah.
I have, I have one that's very loose, and I have one that's, you can only have white curtains, like literally. They can be colored on the inside with the facts from the public way. And they are. If, if there's.
What if they have an open?
It's, it, then, as long as, when the curtains up there, then the lines have to be white.
Would it be more. There's a reason.
We need a.
Well, but.
That is great. Why don't we hear from the applicant now repeating the.
Can I ask, can I ask for a question first?
Please.
And. Maybe I'm getting that thing turned out. Pre-construction, just by a little, pre-construction is all the stuff we wanna do before the ground is broken, right? Construction is all the stuff to do while the ground's being moved.
Right, yep.
Post-construction, there's a few things that, and maybe you already said this one, like. Twenty one, open space to be restricted for development rights prior to building permit. If they're prior to building permit, then it shouldn't be post-construction, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay, and did you say twenty one was being moved?
Uh, I mean, I'm not even sure, that could have been occupancy permit.
Oh, right. Yeah, so twenty. Yeah, twenty two is what we were just kind of talking about, but we've morphed into condo, but that probably should be prior to post.
Yeah, twenty and twenty two needs to be.
Agreed.
So, well, those are, those are like a, a separate post-construction, because also they're not really post. Um, because you'd certainly wanna have the, these documents. You know, in place or we don't.
I, it's a thing prior to. Like, I remember my subdivision, say prior to, uh, certificate of approval. You know, so I mean, you get approval, then you get a certificate of approval, being a subdivision, except for the subdivision. Stay at that one, but it's not a subdivision.
Yeah.
Right, no, but I, exactly, certificate of approval of this. You know, I, then there may be language in the place of, I.
Think about, uh, we said it not to.
Uh, well, I wanted to get your, your all feedback on planning board for us cooperating, then I'll.
And number nineteen, instruction of the accessor. Under installation services shown.
On the approved side.
On the approved side.
Yeah.
So accessor, is that the driveway?
Yeah, that's, right, yeah, that's.
So do we wanna take the word road out, to not cause confusion down the road and just have driveway, or is accessor?
Well, if it's an access road, then we go.
Okay, thank you. So should that be post-construction?
Well, because it's that that's definitely.
It's a vision in your room.
Well, it's but but it's it's post-construction because this isn't going to happen unless you don't do stuff for months and or years.
Right.
So.
But that's why I'm like. Blame it to.
Well, right, because it would already have been dealt. I see the point.
Okay. That might be a like.
Well, here's the other thing. You could always put in a section that says general condition.
I like that.
So you know, you've got pre, during, post, and then your generals, which are, um, you know, a number of the posts for action generals.
Yeah.
All right, so that would be nineteen, twenty, twenty-one.
Eighteen would be a general as well.
Yeah.
Um, I think seventeen would be a general.
I see.
Didn't have to report it, sorry.
Okay, so we repeated up a bunch of ideas. Um, I would like to hear from. What, what time? Do you have pronunciation?
What day is it?
Yep, forty is good. Forty, just like the number.
So you've heard what we've been talking about in terms of condo documents, homeowners association, et cetera. I think you see where we're coming from. Um, it's beginning to sound like having condo docs in place for all this is going to be the way to go.
Yep, so right now, it's just going to be one owner. So can we, can we word those conditions, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two? That we come back to you in the case that it's not a single owner?
So basically, he can ramp out all the units. But, but and that said already, the ownership type change, they have to actually file it with the registry of deeds.
They have to do that.
The, right, all the condo docs, things like that, so.
Uh, uh, so I think Peter was.
So so Peter, before the court came on, uh, would you, uh, have to think further, you'd like to say?
Um, no, it was it was just conditions, uh, twenty-one or twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. It's right now it's under one la- uh, one landowner, so. I just like, I'd like it to read in some kind of way that if that were to change, then we come back to you with all the required condo docs, H O A docs, whatever that may be.
Okay, so on the point, it says should ownership structure of the duplexes change?
Yeah, because this doesn't, so that that commit, that condition doesn't make any sense because it says prior to improving a building permit. The concern that I have is that once these units are out there five years from now and, you know, somebody is just selling these units, they're going to have to go to the trouble of checking the deeds to figure out that they need to come back in front of the planning board for an H O A.
But isn't that the job of, like, when you buy something, your lawyer goes through it in the real.
Exactly. It worked perfectly for law firm, didn't it?
I don't even know if those deeds were written though. I don't.
Those eleven how, you know, not one of them discovered that there was an issue. Not only did the house, not their mortgage lenders didn't discover it. And the mortgage lenders actually had, you know, money in it. So that's my concern. Um.
Well, I.
I I would like to have something.
Okay, well, how much we should we be more concerned that? I mean, how concerned should the planning board be with this flexible development by law, whether the, you know, because it's not a, uh, for those two flexible development condition, one, you know. Or will housing set aside or provision or, um, bonus for its open specs? This is open specs. How could, how concerned should the planning board be regardless of the home of ownership structure? I mean, or should we be more focused on the open space? I think we should be more concerned about, okay, this, it, the H O A during condo, how would we structure it is focused on who is maintaining, whether it's owners or um, you know, renters paying into, uh, condo association or however it may be. I don't know. I think it's the open space that.
Well, then the bylaws clear, there has to be an entity there.
Right.
That owns that in some way or a homeowners association. So at the minimum, you need an H O A.
But are we concerned about?
Somebody who's going to own the open spaces.
Right.
Needs to be agreed with the bylaw, separate from.
Right now.
The ownership of units.
Right, um.
Right now, the open space will be owned by a separate entity and we'll have an O and M plan when you have a draft.
This Dickinson is dying to my rag. Um, which you would feed through the entity is.
I I I don't I don't know the name right now. I think I think one of the conditions was we we give you all that finalized documentation prior. Prior occupancy, prior to construction, whatever we thinks best, but we'll supply that.
So if I, Tom, um, sent me an email, open space. Um. To be part apartment ownership or held joint. What? This will either be one Go Venture Capital Group LLC or two, another LLC with the same principles. Open space to be de-restricted for development rights prior to building permit. So it sounds like, um. You know, so you still need to have. And you know, present to the planning board with a formal document or a legal document saying who who has, who's who's being assigned role of the open space with with an operational maintenance.
Yep, that's correct.
That's what I'm more concerned about.
Right. Right. Um, so it sounds like you guys are still working.
That's right, yeah. And and we'd like to issue that to the planning board for approval. Whatever, whatever milestone you think is correct, whether it's pre-occupancy or pre-construction, both work for us.
I think it would be pre-approval because it's a it's a condition of the bio. Uh, I mean, it's a it's a requirement of the bio. You know, open space be determine determine, you know, who's owning on the pound. So that's like you want either a separate nonprofit or a or corporate entity. To remain much.
Well, the corporate entity can't be a public association.
Okay. Um, there's something I want to do.
I mean, our our goal is not to overburden you with legal pay rights partners, but it is really critical to get this stuff taken care of correctly at this stage of the game. And, um, I I just have no confidence that putting things into a deed that say, oh, come back to the planning board, different documentation five years from now. Um, are actually going to get flapped.
So that was, that was my, what's the mechanism? Besides me being weird and checking property documents every day because I have a realist for the record. Um. Me calling it into question because I think this property certain. Um, like, oh, wait a minute, did somebody, I mean, I could pretty close attention. Okay, that. So like, what is, what would that be?
That's what you need to figure out, right? I I literally am constantly stunned. All those units are bought from our main sold without an H O A. I I'm just like, I can't understand how not one part.
I I would be willing to who those attorneys are not referring enough to my pockets.
Really?
I already know the names of three.
So, um. Okay, so I mean, public hearing is closed, so we're not going to. It's just a question of when they, we, yes, we wrapped in this decision and, uh. Mark and Andrew. Could we not enter the, John, go, we're gonna, and why is someone coming in? This is what I did.
Well, you wish for bigger, um, but it's true. It's no longer.
Yeah, hold on. I'm gonna look in, I'm gonna pull the public record for this name in my house. This is what I do.
He's a killer.
Uh. All right, so I guess.
I don't know if it.
But not, but they could also, this is not a hearing.
Right.
If it's a hearing, we're required to admit.
Right.
This we're not required to admit, I don't, I don't know if it's an open meeting violation or not.
That is a job.
Well, you can't close the door for public hearing, so.
Yeah, so fine. So if we made him mute his videos. Excuse, excuse video.
Um, so there's. One Jones fulfilled the meeting.
They're writing, connecting to body.
And he was a house stasher.
See, we got.
Swarms down the talking work. Is it not simply a pattern and that's there? We are getting me on the planning board. Y'all been.
I mean, I'll approve the last fifteen minutes of this meeting.
Looking you in the straight face.
Brian, you're muted if you're if you're trying to talk to me.
Uh, yeah, that guy was trying to.
No, that's okay.
Me, me, I was trying to. All right, so if we could ask, like, forty and Tom, who wasn't here tonight, um, to one, please, we need to have the um, legal document for the, that's defining the ownership of the open space together with an operational maintenance plan of that. Um. You know, and if we can add that as a condition of. But we should have that before we approve.
Oh, yeah.
Is that something we can get within the next two weeks? It's the forty?
It is. It is. How, how do I get you that with the meeting being closed? Is that any kind of problem?
I don't think so.
No, it's if the hearing is closed, so we're we're just asking for this. To for ready.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, um, but the sooner you can get that, so if we have any questions and back and forth, we only have one meeting in November. Our first meeting of the month would be on Veterans Days and meet, so we're meeting once. So. So the sooner you can get us that document, the better.
And then, yeah, and also I would need to, um. Um, you know, submit it to our town council. Ben.
Yep. So a legal document for the ownership of the open space and an operation and maintenance plan for the open space.
Right.
Okay.
Um, I do have one right. And I don't know if you noticed, sir, is the intent of the current property owner to actually build these or are they just going to potentially sell them off to somebody else so that this may become an issue sooner than later?
Well, right, right now, we're, our plan is to own and rent.
Okay. I had asked that question way back in the beginning and and it was still up in the air, so it was like. Now it's down.
Okay, so does anyone else have any other questions about this order of conditions? Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Hi. Regina?
Yes.
Edgar?
No, yes.
No, yes.
Oh, yes.
York?
Yes.
Frank also votes yet?
No, it's not wants to get in. No, kidding.
Five oh to return at nine fourteen P M.
Shut up.